Welcome, everyone. We'll start our meeting this evening with the Pledge of Allegiance. Matt, would you please lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A moment of silence. Walter, do we have any public comment?
Yes, we do. I'm working on this. This is—Chris, you gotta help me out here. Thank you, Chris. Come on down.
Good evening, everyone. Chris Carsten, 99, inspired a little—that's working, but I don't think I need it. I—this is my second town council. I was here last week, and I have to say, I was heartened by the—lived there 15 years. And I was really heartened by the civil nature of the way the audience behaved themselves. I mean, Pete had to tweak them once, but other than that, we were particularly well behaved. And the number of times that people who were speaking mentioned the importance of having a—do the right thing orientation and to get rid of some of the divisiveness that you all have experienced here recently. I wasn't that aware of all that. So, I was heartened. I was here because I got caught up in the illegal appointments meeting from the week before. I had—I was appointed to the Ethics Commission in that meeting that's since been deemed illegal and think we wanted to show up and find out what it was all about. I—that came about because several months ago, there was a Art Moon Spectroval thing that said Ethics Commission position available, and my wife, as well, wanted to do have to be a bit about putting my name forward for that. I've worked in the ethics business for 12 years. I work primarily in corporate integrity, so I had to work with companies in the corporate world. IBM, Ford, General Mills, Connecticut United Technologies, Carters, Priceline, Berkeley, Henkel. Try to help them amongst their employees do the right thing in everything they do. Seems to some people to be a oxymoron, ethics of business, but you'd be surprised at just how much time, effort, energy, money goes into doing the right thing to many, many of our fine corporations across the world. So, I ultimately wrote a letter to David, mentioned to him that I had some interest in this, didn't really know what it was all about, and got a letter in the mail saying I'd been appointed to the commission. Hadn't really had much other than, you know, some casual discussion with him about it. And I have to say, I mean, I've been fortunate to have a successful career. When I opened that letter and read that, I—I felt honored. I felt—you know, it made me feel different. It made me feel good. I had been mentioning to my wife, as I approached retirement age, that one of the things I want to do is be more involved in the community. The only thing I've done in military—I don't minimize it because I think it's important in terms of community service—is help several hundred boys and girls how to hit, throw, and field a baseball, and play baseball and softball with integrity. But this is a little different than that. And so, anyway, I put it forward. I've since—sent a note to Pete, letting him know that I was interested in. I met him after the meeting last week and have set up a time to meet with him in a few weeks just after the holidays. I'm not—and never had been—a registered Republican or Democrat. I'm fiercely independent. I have been my whole life. You don't have time to understand where that came from, but sometime over a year, I'd be happy to share that with you as well. But I think that's a very important attribute for a position like the Ethics Commission, where people—this is primarily about conflicts of interest. It's not broader, although Pete, as he mentioned in the meeting last week, has talked about potentially broadening it, which I think is a really good idea. In the corporate world, people have gone from, you know, very rules-based code of ethics to values-based codes of ethics. It's going to trend. Part of how I got caught up in it a dozen years ago. And so, I think that there are more things that can be done, and I think independence is very, very important to that job. So, I'm motivated to serve. I'm looking forward to meeting with Pete, asking him for his support and for asking him for support as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Jeff McFarady, please.
That's how you get the board. Good evening, everyone. I'm here representing the American Legion tonight, American Legion Post 31, and we have a Boy Scout, Kevin Stahl, who is in Troop 31, is working on an Eagle Scout project. And he has gone beyond his 18th birthday, which is the defined cutoff time for a Boy Scout to be able to obtain his Eagle Scout badge. But he has some physical handicaps and disabilities, and they've allowed him to go beyond the age of 18 to complete the project. The project he chose to do was create a beautiful four-by-four, two-sided sign to go by the side of the road to recognize the American Legion. He's almost completely to fruition on his project, and one thing is submitted through the zoning for the paperwork and everything to do, and there's a $120 fee for that. And I'm asking the town council tonight to consider waiving that fee so that they don't have to pay that. I don't know how that works exactly, but he's worked very hard on this project. The sign is absolutely beautiful, and once it's erected, people will be more readily available to identify where the post is located. So, I'm asking that you folks would give that some consideration tonight and help him to finish his project. If things go all right, he's hoping to put the sign up on Saturday coming, so all things work out right. So, I'll thank you for your time. Have a good night.
Thank you, Jeff. Vice Chair, that's the end of the public comment.
Well, thank you, Walter. Aside from thanking everyone for being here this evening, I want to let you know that Mayor Pete is recovering nicely. He took advantage of an opening with his surgeon. As many of you know, he had some surgery a couple of years ago when he had a little node left to be removed. Very simple operation, went beautifully according to the surgeon. He's recovering nicely, and he'll be back home tomorrow. They just wanted to keep him overnight. So, hence, that's my reason for being here. I would like to bring up one thing. We're going to move to approval of minutes, but we have a closed session, executive session at the end, and I'd like to move that number 12 item to amend the rules, to move it up to after number nine.
Let's second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So, we'll move to item three, which is approval of prior minutes.
I move.
The first one is the special town council meeting of November 28.
I move again.
Second?
I have an amendment.
After a second, then we leave the special.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Give a minute.
Thank you. Sorry. In the minutes, I spoke in public comments, and the minutes are not accurate. Could I read in the accurate statement?
On page three, the next-to-last paragraph that's what you're talking about.
Correct. After Steve Looney and before Jeff McFarady, the minutes read, Lisa Heda, a new Milford resident, said two people on the agenda should not be appointed. She felt Irene Scraballo and Rosalind Gill gave misleading testimony at the sitting council meeting and said people should be held accountable. And I know I said a lot, and Ms. Barstall, I'll actually put a copy for you so you don't have to scribble what I said. What I said was, I asked that the town council table the appointments tonight. If you choose to not table the appointments, I believe that two of the recommended candidates should not be moved forward. These committees are important and make decisions on behalf of the town. Details are important. For example, I was at a sitting council hearing earlier this month for candidate solar and heard several committee members give testimony about their decisions and impact of those decisions. It struck me then that attention to detail was and is important. Irene Scraballo and Rosalind Gill were presented as candidates that are last meetings unaffiliated. Now they're Democrats after lengthy discussion at last town council. It doesn't matter who put their name on the list, the DTC or someone else, it's incumbent upon them to make sure their details are right. We cannot afford to have mistakes of this magnitude, disqualifying mistakes happen on these committees. For this reason, these candidates should be removed from consideration. I just want to make sure that everybody understood they weren't at the sitting council giving testimony. That was an example I gave.
She wants this verbatim added?
Yes, please.
Could you possibly send her a word, Doc, just so you can cut—
Yeah, I can do that.
Friendly amendment? Everybody agree with that?
Sure.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second for the minutes?
Given what happened at the December 4 meeting, it would be appropriate, and it's up to the council if they want to, to note on the top, in parentheses, that all votes at this meeting were void pursuant to the action of December 4. It would be appropriate to note that, given because it's so rare that it happens, I would say that that should be noted.
Say it again?
If the council's in agreement, I would say put on top of this minutes that note, all votes at this meeting were void pursuant to the December 4 meeting.
Where would you like that to be?
See where the parentheses are on top of the page where it says—
Well, that's—that this says that these are draft until we're approving what we are doing now, so—
Right, so I would put it right there.
Okay. Well, that will be removed once they're approved.
Right.
So, you would like your statement to stay there, right?
Sure.
Could you read it again so Stephanie can say—
I would say, note—
All votes taken.
All votes taken at this meeting, voided pursuant to town council action of December 4, 2017.
Makes sense.
Again, if that's friendly?
I—I'm not so sure it's friendly. Yes, Pete?
Depending on your perspective.
It's a suggestion, I'm not sure.
It shouldn't be with those minutes. And those minutes are dated November. If you want to put anything, it's going to be in the next set of minutes. It shouldn't be with those. It's inappropriate. It'll be recorded on the December 4 minutes.
That makes sense.
You're saying—
I've never—my—here's my point. I've never seen this made before, where something happened in the future, so we're going to make note of it here.
Maybe the point is that someone in the future brings up something that happens on the 28th as a point of why they're doing something, and it's put on the top that said that this meeting did not—was voided, that's one. I know—we have another attorney that's been around for a while—
Should it perhaps—should it perhaps be part of the December 4, which is where we invalidated the November 28?
It should—it should be on the 4—
Right.
It would also be noted in the 4, but for exactly the reason Councilman Nadeholm is saying. You don't want anybody referring to the 28 minutes as something that happened when the votes were voided by the council. It's so rare that the action taken on the 4th happens, that's why it should be noted.
Can we—is it—is it possible to ask the other attorney that's been around the town for so long time if you can?
No.
No?
Well, actually, technically, no. Attorney Grimes is our attorney.
It's—it's a suggestion that I would give based on my discussions with FBOI. You don't have to accept it if you don't want to.
Counsel, it's not up to me. Counsel? Discussion? Comments?
I can move along without it.
Go and let it become part of the 4th, December 4, which is where it actually happened. There's nothing wrong with the sentence. I mean, I think that's a good idea to put that in there. Doug?
I think it should reflect the December 4 when the actual action took place, not when the—
So, I think—
I just—yeah, my—my fear is just—is somewhere down the road, when someone comes through minutes and they see something that happened on this date and don't read to the 4th, they're saying to themselves that something that happened in this meeting happened, and they're agreeing with it, when you've actually said the meeting did not happen. I mean—
Right.
—it was an illegal meeting. So, they're agreeing to the number 28. Not one point does it say this was illegal, so everything you're reading doesn't really pertain to—
Yeah, but there are many things that come up after our minutes, and, you know, I guess here the onus is on the person reading to follow through and read some more. But shall we—it's not a friendly amendment. That was the first thing someone said. Obviously, it's not friendly. So, we're still in the discussion mode. That was your recommendation.
My recommendation, I mean, you could—the council can do what it wants, but I mean, as I said, the only reason for it is because it's so rare that a—that the votes from the previous meeting are voided. That's all.
Right, but I—I wouldn't want to set a precedent that we—we put future items on past minutes. I—I think that's not a good—that's just my feeling, Tom.
Except there's an illegal meeting. If you were going to make that statement, wouldn't it be at the very end of these?
It shouldn't be in these minutes—
Right.
—because it wasn't part of these minutes. It should be at the—on the 4th.
But how would that be referenced, to the previous meeting?
Well, in the minutes of December 4—
Part of the 4th minutes, it says that voided—
Yes, it's in the—the minutes of December 4 when we invalidated, that's where you'd find it. So, this, in essence, has to be here because we actually had a meeting, but it would be going back in time to add it.
And I'll clarify, just for the council, the difference between voiding and rescinding. Rescinding implies that your first motion was valid. Void means shouldn't have happened in the first instance.
I understand. I understand. I think we all understand.
Up to you.
So, we have—I—I want to make sure we do this properly. You interjected that comment. We were in the middle of discussion. We don't have—to—how many people would like to add that? We didn't do that. It's not friendly, so we—we have a motion on the floor.
Per-per legal advice, if you want to make a motion to the floor on the 28th, add that verbiage to the floor.
Well, he's—he's suggesting it, but we don't have a consensus. Mr. Mullen, you have a comment?
Yes, sir. I—I just think for clarity, if someone were to make a motion to amend the minutes to add that and then vote on it, that would be my only recommendation, if somebody wants to make a—
Right.
—motion to amend it, I say.
Well, that's what I'm asking. We have one motion already, which we'd have to withdraw, if somebody wants to make a motion to add Attorney Grimes' line about the votes being voided.
I—I don't think we have to withdraw the motion to the floor.
You don't? Can't have two motions on one thing?
I—I think we can make a motion to amend.
Okay.
I—I believe that's—
We could. Does anybody want to make a motion to amend, to add those items?
I'll make a motion to amend the minutes from November 28 to include the state that—
You do? Okay. That all votes taken, avoided?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion, and we have an amendment, and we have a second.
Is there a second?
A second. I'll second that.
This is to write on November 28?
It's to add it at the top of the meeting minutes.
You don't have to do anything to the next meeting because it's already in there. We voted.
Any more discussion?
Can I just ask, are you going to continue amending the minutes because there's a couple of date changes that I need to—just in the DTC?
You would like to tell us about an error?
Yeah.
Okay. Friendly amendment, what would you like?
So, EDC, reporter Kevin House, and Michael Gold, and Alexander Kirk should be to 2022, not 2019.
Okay. These, as we are now adding on the top, none of these occurred. None of these appointments—
So, it doesn't matter?
—happened. Right. It invalidated everything, so we—we don't want to amend something that isn't pertinent, right? Any other discussion? Any other amendments? Okay. All those in favor of adding the line, "All votes taken at this meeting of November 28 are voided," say aye, all those that want that added?
Aye. Okay, just hold up your hands for a second, please.
Oh, did you get Walter? He was a late arrival.
He was a late—late arrival.
Okay, and those against? Okay, so the ayes have it. So, these minutes will now move into the history book. We also need a motion for the special town council meeting of December 4.
Yeah, I think we didn't finish. We only voted on amending these. We never voted to accept the minutes.
That was the motion that was on the floor, was to accept it. And then we amended it. There was a friendly amendment and a quasi-friendly amendment. That's what we just voted on, was to accept it.
Right, so we're past the November 28th, now we're on to December 4. I—I thought that vote, because the vote was—the vote was to amend the minutes, but we never actually voted to approve the minutes.
The motion on the floor was to approve the minutes of November 28, and it was seconded, and then Attorney Grimes added in what he added in and started our—
That's not what I said. I just thought it was my motion. Oh, the first motion was on the floor, but we were inside that motion to an amendment to the minutes, and that's what we voted on right now, three to four, three to three, was I made the motion to change the minute. Then we have to now vote on the minutes.
Correct. Well, we vote on it with the amendment.
Right. But that means that these guys—that means these guys are voting against the minutes, which—
Okay, my—my fault.
Yeah, that—we have to accept it.
So, we have a vote of three to—four to two to accept the amendment?
Four to three.
Vice Chairman doesn't vote.
I don't vote.
Michael Gold voted. Didn't vote. He voted against it, didn't he?
And so did Peter.
Pete, one, two, three voted.
The vote was with you.
Oh, you in favor?
Yeah.
Of changing?
I did.
Oh, okay. I got it.
So, it's the amendment within the motion.
Sorry, guys.
I'm with you.
You're right.
Now, we had an amendment for approval of the minutes. And we had a second.
Right. Get some discussion in the corner here.
And now we're back to discussion.
So, and I do this just really for clarification.
It's okay.
So, at this point, it should be approval of the minutes as amended.
Correct. Right, so, we are now going to say, so everybody knows what you're voting on, approval of the minutes of the December 4 special meeting as amended. Oh, 11/28, right. I pushed it—I pushed it into the record books already. Sorry. I amend what I said, Stephanie. November 28.
I second.
Sorry, been seconded by Tom. All those in favor of accepting the amended minutes?
Aye.
Yes.
Okay. Oh, I can't vote. Take that back. Sorry, let's have it. All those against?
No.
There we go. Okay. It's funny, I just saw that happen. Okay. Now, we'll move forward to the special town council meeting of December the 4th. Special meeting minutes. Do I have a motion?
So, move. Second.
Discussion? Dare I ask, are there any amendments?
Do we do have one correction? I'm sorry. Just to be accurate, on page four—
Yeah, can you read some?
Yeah, I—I—
Well, because it concerns—it concerns—it concerns my—it concerns my client work, that's why.
Well, I'm not going to make a—it's not my place. I'm not going to be sitting here after this, so go ahead. What does anyone like say?
Oh, no, it just says that the—in the third paragraph at the bottom, it said that the cases that I was working on for Mr. Bass were closed. Neither case is closed. I just anticipate my work is complete.
What page are you on?
Four.
I have a face. Page 41.
Four.
The last paragraph?
It's third from the bottom. That says that I said the case was closed. It's—it's not closed. I just anticipate my work is complete.
But you—okay. Friendly amendment?
That's all, yep. That's right.
Friendly amendment?
That's all.
Do you want me to repeat it?
Friendly amendment?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, we don't need to vote for that. We have a motion, we have a second, we have a friendly amendment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Question carries. Thank you. Okay, now—
Nice.
Quickly, you know, we will move to item four, which is the discussion action. Let me just—we're going to move up the executive session. Yeah, I think—yeah, we were going to put it in under number nine. Do we want to stay with that?
Yeah.
We have the Director of Finance here.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
That'd be Greg Ossipow.
Good evening. My name is Greg Ossipow. For those who don't know me, for the past six years, I've been comptroller for the county in Milford. Before that, I had 23 years in the city of Bridgeport in various financial positions, budget analyst, finance officer, accountant. I have an open-door policy, which Councilwoman Hyde has most graciously exercised already. And I'm approachable, so—and I hope to be as transparent as possible. I just want to give you a little bit of background on what we're doing currently in the finance office. The audit is current—for fiscal year 2017 is currently in progress. The field work has been completed. Final adjustments and audit entries are being prepared, and I hope to have a draft audit within the next several weeks, and I expect favorable operating results from this audit. The—but we kicked off the FY '19 budget season. I pushed out the—the file to all the department heads and let them know that I'm available if they need training on how to enter their budget in unis. The completed budget is due back to the Department of Finance by January 5. And this year, I reached out to Tyler Technology. I hope to have a more budget-friendly document. They're working on that. I have a draft that I haven't looked at yet, but I'll look at that tomorrow, and hopefully we will have one comprehensive budget document rather than two. The year-to-date budget, this is as of October, the end of October. That was all pushed out to you folks last week. The expenditures, we have 40.8% were expended or encumbered as the—at the end of October 31st. I just want to explain a little bit about that report that you're seeing. You need to pay attention to encumbrances. A lot of the expenditures are—are seasonal. You'll have a lot of expenditures that are up front, if you will. For example, the ARC on the pension, I usually push that out in July, so principal has more time to invest that and will get more return. So, if you look at the pension line, for instance, it's virtually fully expended. That's because we contributed our ARC. So, you need to take those things into consideration when looking and analyzing the budget. There are some issues, some of the issues I—I want to point out in the expenditures, dispatcher overtime, the budget is overspent. They are down two positions, and there are two dispatchers currently in training. So, once they come on board, that should alleviate the—the dispatcher overtime. Consequently, as a result of that, to offset the overtime, there are savings in the dispatcher being down two positions. Recycling overtime is overspent. Mike Zarben, last budgeter, has had reduced that budget line with the anticipation that the hiring of a new foreman would alleviate the need for overtime in that department, and there was subsequent grievance by the union, which they agreed to allow the union to continue to operate the recycling center on Saturdays on an overtime basis. A budget transfer has been initiated by Mike to mitigate that problem. I'm not sure that—I may keep an eye on that, and at the year-end, I usually do chewing up of accounts because the amount that was requested, I'm not sure is going to be enough, and I don't want to address that issue again. So, at year-end adjustments, I can make the adjustments there. Legal expense, there's an other legal expense line that is currently depleted. A supplemental appropriation will have to occur at some point in order to pay legal work not handled by the town attorney. Councilwoman Hyde had given me a litany of questions here. And like I said, some of the—some of the issues and some of her concerns are the timing of when expenditures are are made. For instance, I already answered the fringe benefit, yes, the pension payout— For instance, I already answered the fringe, yes, the pension payout occurs at the beginning of the year. So, um, only other expenditures that'll occur out of that account during the course of the fiscal year are when we have Angel, which is our actuary, our pension actuary, calculate, um, retirement benefits. And that's usually $200 per, per incident. Private duty, you had a question about private duty. There is an offsetting revenue line. Traditionally, $50,000 was budgeted both on the revenue expenditure side. We know for certain, we don't know how much, you know, people will want outside overtime. That's for, you know, the officers to direct traffic and, you know, address safety concerns with road construction projects. But I can tell you this, uh, on the revenue side, this is a moneymaker for us. So, um, I can point you out to the revenue line. I think we, you know, I don't have it off, off.
Found out.
It, revenues always exceed expenditures, so that line is always covered. And what happens at the year-end is I will transfer any excess from the revenue line into the expenditure line, so it doesn't look as though it was overspent. So that's done at the end of the year. Let's see. Yep. Legal do committees encumber their full amount at the beginning of the year. Um, not all of it. What is typically done with, uh, the use of standing orders is more or less applied throughout the town. Uh, for instance, in public works. Mike may have a standing order with ONG to get concrete, so he doesn't have to keep initiating a purchase order because it takes time and energy and actually money to produce a purchase order. So what, uh, the departments will normally do is put in a standing order for, say, like, legal services. And as the bills come in, they'll pay them against that purchase order. IT, why so high? Well, a lot of the, um, costs for IT are upfront. They're mostly for software services, maintenance agreements. So, and those are a lot front-loaded for, she's like munis and QDS for our tax system. Uh, a lot of permit software and things like that. Fire, Lanesville is, is high because of Lanesville addition? Uh, yes, it is, because there was $62,000 that came from a sign fund balance to do the Lanesville, uh, expansion study, so that's why that's front-loaded. Again, DPW, yes, they, they use their, uh, standing orders to, so they don't have to. Each incident where they need the money, they don't need to go ahead and issue purchase orders at a time.
Greg, can I just ask you a question?
Yep.
Did you receive questions ahead of time from anyone else? Any other council member?
No.
Okay. Um, it's interesting what, some of these things we can figure out, but we don't know what the questions were that you were presented. So some of your responses aren't connecting to what was asked. So I'm just curious.
Well, I, I, you want me to read them out verbatim?
No, not necessarily, but, um, I'm just curious if anybody else had any, aside from.
Well, if they did, and I cover them now, I mean.
Right, no, no, I think it's all, I get it great, you had them in advance. I just wanted to make sure that everybody was aware of what you were answering, that's all. Remember, we have people who are not as, uh, as 100% familiar with the budgeting as in past years. We have some new people.
No, I know, and I'm trying to.
Yeah, yeah.
Again, this is my first rodeo too.
If anybody else had any.
Katie, so.
Doing good.
No, you don't, okay.
You know, this is work in progress.
I just wanna make sure that everybody understands when you're saying that DPW has this, what you're talking about. But, that's fine. As long as anybody raised your hand.
I'm certainly gonna open up the questions, so, you know, if I'm not being clear or.
No, you're being clear. I just hope that, because they don't know her questions ahead, that's all. Just make sure you, let it, no, let, let us.
I mean, feel free and, you know, for future, to submit questions, even caucus and.
Yes, I think it's a good idea to just hit them to you, it makes it a lot faster.
And just as a little bit of background too, so, um, what Greg and I have talked about via email was, I looked at, and because I don't know, and the budget process is right around the corner, is I looked at, um, the amount of encumbrances plus expenditures versus 30%. The council ran rate and said, okay, is it, is it either seasonal, you know, front-end loaded, or is it natural overs that we need to keep an eye on as we go into the budget process? It was kind of the foundation of, of some different line items that Greg was talking about very well.
Now, I just wanna make sure that some of our new council members know that if they have a question, they can raise their hand.
Well, I was gonna open up at the end.
No, I mean, when you're answering her question, if they had a question on their question.
I prefer.
Keep going, Greg.
Yeah, I prefer to get through my presentation and open up for questions afterwards. And a lot, again, a lot of these issues that are being raised, you know, debt service, for instance, anything added that wasn't planned for, or is this a reflection of two quarterly repayments in a four-month time period? The way debt service works, we'll get debt payments in July and January. So what you're, what's reflected there is 50% of, um, you know, certain issues. Certain issues mature at different times, they come due at different times. The only one that we have a monthly payment for is our clean water fund. That's our 2% loan for the, uh, for the expansion of, uh, WPCA. And, uh, that's, oh, dog, oh, Dog Pound, okay. Yeah, no, see, that's a semi-annual payment. That Dog Pound reflects the, essentially, all these questions of why are they so high? And, you know, it's just the timing of payments. Let me move on to, uh, to revenues. Overall, revenues are at 44.8% of budget. Tax collection are very robust. They're at 55% at the end of October. Building permits are like at 25% of budget. It bears watching. The spring is their busy season, so, uh, I expect that while they're getting a lot of volume in, they're for small-dollar projects. It's not a lot of new construction. That's where the big dollars come in, so, it's just something that bears watching. Parks revenue was down slightly due to the fact that there were some programs that were canceled for various reasons. And I spoke to the director, and he says that he is initiating new programs to take place of the ones that were canceled. So he has every confidence that, uh, his revenues will pick up. And obviously, a lot of those come in the warmer months too, uh, park fees and things of that nature. Then, that brings us to the shortfall in state revenues. Overall, New Milford can expect revenues from the state to be $2,210,734 lower than budgeted. The peak quoic revenue, it's made up of several components. The peak quoic revenue is down $2,352. Town aid roads is down $2,791. The additional sales tax sharing has been eliminated, and that's to the tune of $565,898. LoSiP, they broke, uh, trend with this, were actually gaining $160,534. Uh, colleges and hospitals are down $36,975. And finally, the big dog in the room, ECS, is a reduction of $1,763,236 from what was budgeted. I must admit, these are structural changes, not cyclical, and we can expect this trend to continue, not only here, but all throughout the state. Discussion?
The first number you gave was a reduced state revenue, is $2.2 million?
Yes.
Was that a cumulative number?
Yes, yeah, that, that was a component of the ones that I.
And then you explained.
Right.
We got to that number.
The individual.
Thank you. I just wanna go back to where you started, um, concerning the audit.
Yes.
Uh, do you think, who's our audit company right now?
Uh, Mahoney Sable.
Uh, do you think they'll be done by December 31st or?
No, well, we had to file for an extension.
You filed for the extension, all right.
That's already been done.
Do you think, uh, do you expect January 31st then?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll have it before budget season?
Yes, I expect that. Uh, and then the Board of Finance will call a joint meeting to discuss the findings.
What, will they, will the audit company be here to discuss that?
Yes, yes.
All right, that's, and that will be before budget season?
Uh, I'm hoping so. That, that's, that all depends upon, you know, when Board of Finance calls a meeting. Yeah, I'd like it to be before budget, definitely.
All right, I, I just, let me just make one comment. What Board of Finance does or doesn't do is, is fine. We should have the auditors here to speak to us before we start budget discussions, so.
Well, it's, by charter, it's in their purview to call a meeting, just saying.
Aren't we allowed to invite the auditors here to speak with us?
That's a good question. I, I, I don't, here we are.
Because I always had the impression we had before, so.
Yes, yeah, yes, yeah.
But that's the only reason I'm bringing that up. I, I would, I would think it would be benefit, especially with the number of new people we have sitting on the table. It would be very beneficial.
I have no objection.
Okay, great. I'm sorry, let me just go down here. You know, I've always kind of wondered about that private duty line. Why don't we just have it at $1? Because what comes in goes out. It's, it's like, it's, it's a similar thing when the Board of Ed applies for a grant. They don't put the grant in their budget, because whatever comes in goes out 100%.
You could put a zero for that, man.
Well, I didn't know if you need to put a dollar in a line just to keep the line open, is my point. So, I, I just think it'd be better if we left that, but that's something.
Well, it's, it's balanced by $50,000 on the revenue side anyways, Pete, so the, the number's kind of arbitrary.
Yeah, I don't 100% agree, but that's all. Debt service. I was reading something, I wish I could remember where I was reading this. Our debt service per capita is one of the lowest in the states, in the state, excuse me. Could that be accurate? And I'm sorry, I can't recall where I read this, I shouldn't.
Could it be? Maybe. Could I tell you definitively?
Well, do you know the number off the top of your head what our debt service is right now on an annual basis?
I did not bring the schedule with me. You know what, it's right in the year-to-date budget report.
Well, if I had read.
The revised, the revised budget, $6,785.
I'm sorry, give me that number, can I just?
I think it's $6,785,492. That's 105.
105, oh.
Phone code, right.
Yeah, it is, yeah.
That's the revised budget.
$6,785,492 this fiscal year.
That's an incredibly low debt service relative to the size of this town.
Still gotta pay it.
Obviously, we have to pay it, but I mean, when you look at the towns across the state and the debt service they have, and the population they have, relatively speaking, our debt service is very, very low. Last thing.
I mean, I know you wanna have some debt so you can provoke or whatever, but I don't think there's many of them that are debtless.
Well, I, I agree with you. I think it's something that needs to be discussed. What, what do you do with your debt service relative to the size of your budget to, for the benefit of the town?
Yeah.
What are you gonna do for your town? You know, how much do you put into roads? How much do you put into, let's say, a library expansion or things like that? So I, I agree with you, it, it's, but it's not like where we were 15 years ago when we're paying off two schools. When our debt service was, I don't know, it was 20-something million a year, it seemed like. Really, it wasn't, but it seemed incredibly high.
Do you have any other, um, are you done?
No.
Okay, go ahead.
One last thing, but, no problems, I'll be done quickly.
Go ahead, no, it's fine, I want you to.
Um, the one thing that's great about parks and recreation is interest goes up and goes down in their programs. And you will see times where all of a sudden, you're super busy with something, then all of a sudden, there's no interest in a certain activity. And all of a sudden, it goes down, and the revenues go down, and then something comes up, the revenues go up. So that's a very flexible number for park.
Right.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Any other questions for Greg?
Well, that's, you got any other good news for us about, uh? Well, I mean, you know, a, a plan has to be derived to address that 2.2. And, and in my analysis, I believe that I'm expecting the Board of Ed to come to the table and, you know, be part of the solution. Because the, the largest cut we experienced was ECS. I believe we can meet in the middle of the road on the number and come up with a solution that is relatively painless this year. But you need, I, I don't wanna seem, um, well, we have to keep this in mind for next year's budget. We're already starting off on a 2.2 million hole with expenditures escalating and a flat grant list, so.
We, we did have a sense that this was coming for the last year or so. I mean, and it's not like anybody who's lived there more than a few years realized the state's been going down this path for quite some time. So, we've got a lot of work ahead of us. Um, and if you can't just come up with a supplemental tax bill, that will stifle growth here.
No, no, I wouldn't recommend that.
So we're gonna have to become very sharp with our pencils and figure out a way to do this, so that.
No, I, I, I have some ideas, um, I need to discuss with the mayor. And also here, bring, uh, the Board of Ed to the table and see what they have, uh, in their plans to help mitigate this problem. Uh, we have approximately six months, so, not bad. Uh, first week on the job, I inherit an audit, a budget, and a deficit.
A deficit. Congratulations, Greg.
Greg, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very comprehensive, appreciate it. Next, we have item five, which is the Director of Health. This is a discussion of possible action regarding the generator, uh, grant application. We have Mike Cresspin.
Yeah. Good evening, I'm Mike Cresspin, Director of Health. We're asking you to review and possibly approve a resolution that's written there in the, in the agenda. The purpose is, uh, the generator, replacement generator, uh, grant came along in mid-November, and we applied for it. We worked with Public Works Department. And the fire marshal is also the emergency management director. The deadline for the grant application was December 4th. But this, they allowed us to submit a previous resolution. And then, uh, I asked for, I asked for an extension on the grant. They said, well, it would be better to submit what you have and then get the resolution passed and submit that later, because if you come in late with your entire application, then you score lower. So, we're doing the resolution, we're allowed to submit the previous resolution.
So, we just have to have a motion to authorize this?
Katie, can I make the motion to authorize a resolution of the New Milford Town Council? Resolve that Town of New Milford may enter into with and deliver to the State of Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection, Division of an Emergency Management and Homeland Security, any and all documents which it deems to be necessary or appropriate. Further resolve that Pete Bass, as Mayor of the Town of New Milford, is authorized and directed to execute and deliver any and all documents on behalf of the Town of New Milford and to do and perform all acts and things which he seems to be, deems to be necessary or appropriate to carry out the terms of such documents, including but not limited to executing and delivering all agreements and documents contemplated by such documents.
Do you have a second? Thank you, Walter. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you, Michael. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Michael.
Uh, item six, refunds, tax collector, you have the list, Councilman, in your bracket. Do I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Uh, next item is from the Personnel Department. This is discussion and possible action regarding a job description for a grant writer. Our job description subcommittee met with our Human Resource Director to go over this quite a few times. quite a few times. Uh, do I have a motion to accept?
So moved. Second.
Discussion? First of all?
Is this a full-time position?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Friendly amendment?
Yes.
Um, yeah, it says bachelor's degree under minimum qualifications. I would like to have the council consider adding the words "or equivalent experience."
Give me a second to that.
Friendly amendment to this?
Friendly amendment.
Yes, it was part of our discussion. Anyone have any?
Yeah.
Comments on that? Thank you.
Is there a reason why you want to do that?
Uh, yes, there is. Um, in reviewing several different sources as part of the job committee and thinking about, um, getting the biggest bang for our buck, there are some, particularly in the nonprofit world, some grant writers that don't necessarily have a first degree but do this type of work and are very successful.
Agreed with that.
Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion, friendly amendment to it. We have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Councilman Moe? Okay, appointments and reappointments. Um, like to do this in a block? Tom?
Yes, um, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, to approve the following appointments and reappointments to boards, commissions, and committees, uh, as set forth in the agenda.
Any discussion?
Two second, two second.
Oh. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Uh, item nine is the Housatonic Resource Recovery, authorizing, it's for Hurrah. This appointment, um, we had to do it, we thought it carried forward, but it doesn't. It's appointment of, uh, Mayor Pete Bass as the New Milford representative to Hurrah from December 1st through November 5th of 2019.
Second.
All in favor? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session, as we set forth in the beginning of this meeting.
Your second? And all in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to ask Attorney DeBella and Attorney Grimes to stay, and everyone else will call you back. Okay.
I like you. I promise you.
Okay, so, um, we have, need a motion to come back to open, open session, and please be advised that during executive session, there were no motions made or any votes were taken. Do I have someone in the mood to go back?
So moved.
Second. Okay. Attorney DeBella?
No, you don't know me, I'm Attorney DeBella, I'm the town planner, and, uh, I've been town planning for 40 years, and I'm, I'm in September.
Uh, Madam Mayor, Madam Vice Chair.
You're gonna say, you're gonna, I'm a judge, I'm a mayor.
Before you were a judge, uh, I got you in some of the branches of government, right?
Still haven't gotten paid yet.
I thought you were Madam, Madam Legislature. Could you please, uh, solicit a motion?
Yes, I would. May I have a motion, please, on the, uh, first case?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the proposed settlement as discussed in executive session for McRitchie versus New Milford Ambulance.
Any discussion?
Any discussion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ma'am, you might, you might want to inform the constituents that Kerm is paying that.
Yes. You did, thank you. Okay, do I have a motion for our second?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to accept the proposed settlement as discussed in executive session for Hyde versus the Town of New Milford.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Randy.
Thank you very much.
Merry Christmas.
Okay, so we jumped ahead on that. We'll now go back to item 10, uh, which we will, uh, have a, a motion, we'll have our town planner come up after votes. Someone like to make a motion on this? Doug?
Would you do this one?
Oh, well, Tom's gonna do it then.
Doug can do it.
Oh, I thought you didn't want to. Please, go right ahead.
We're still learning. Go for it.
All right, discussion of possible action regarding the possible donation of 1.76 acre riverfront parcel to the Town of New Milford from Ms. Jody Drewlard.
Mister.
Mister Jody Drewlard. Owner of the property identified as tax accessible lot 35.1 slash 45. The property is located just north of Helen Marks Park and across the street from B&amp;B Mason's Supply. Property has approximately 228.
Feet.
Feet of frontage on the Housatonic River as located entirely within the 100-year floodplain. The parcel is located in the R20 residential zone. The abutting properties to the north and south are residential properties, while the properties across the street are located in the business zone. Acquisition of this property will allow for long-term preservation of the ravine, floodplain, and habitat. Long-term maintenance and monitoring of the property would be required if access is created. If the town agrees to accept the property donation, no river access or other property improvements should be created on the site until such time as a plan is created within the associated funding, with associated funding as well as a planned funding for maintenance. If the Town Council recommends the town accept the property donation, the proposed acquisition would need to be referred to the Planning Commission as a Section 8-24 referral, and a town meeting would then need to be scheduled.
Second.
Okay. Discussion? We have our town planner Kathy Cassinatticare, if you have questions for her. Even?
Yeah, just a couple things.
I have a last.
Oh, that would be great.
Yep.
Just, just so it's in the minutes properly, what Tom read of 228 feet, because feet is not here.
Right.
So just, just.
So we'll add the FT for the, the little foot symbol. Oh, much better. Thank you, Kathy, this is much better.
Is there a, uh, structure on this property at the moment?
No.
Thank you. Has there ever been a structure?
My, my research shows probably for the past 50 years at least, there's never been a structure.
Okay.
Is it 50 or 50?
Yes.
Peter?
Uh, one, one other question. Long-term maintenance, uh, who would be maintaining the property?
Um, at this point, it, it's just an opportunity and there's no long-term plan for it yet, so it's just wooded. So I don't think that at this point needs any maintenance.
And it's noted that if it ever did, that that would have to be accounted for in any funding, so.
I just bring this issue up, because sometimes, uh, we get property in, which I have no objection to take the property in, but it's often then turned over to the park or rec department. And they keep getting added and added and property, property, which again, I don't object to the property, but they don't get added maintenance people, so.
No, fully know that.
I'll leave it, I want to bring up. I, I'm, I'm totally for this, no objection at all.
Michael?
Just a quick question, Kathy. Is, uh, is this part of a larger parcel that the person decided to keep, keep their home on a smaller parcel and donate this?
No, it's just, they.
It's a standalone?
Excuse me?
It's a standalone lot?
Standalone, yes, yes.
Thank you.
It's buildable, maybe, if, if, the guy Kathy, you could have built it?
It's the only, it's, um, all floodplain, so if they did build, they'd have to elevate the finished first bar above the floodplain elevation, so it, it could be buildable, it's just how much money you want to put into it.
As noted, you know, in, in the motion, this is in, in light of what the proposed plan of the future to bring our bike and trail paths northward. Um, someone's offering to donate this to us, so it would be nice not to have to go around it at some point, had they not done so. All right, and no more further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Kathy.
So then, a town meeting needs to be set, so I don't know if you want to.
Yes, uh, but first we would have it go for planning for the 824, right? And, uh, due to the holiday, I was thinking we should probably wait for them to get it on their agenda?
The, um, the people that are donating it wanted to try to do it by year end, but I just don't see that happening. Unless planning schedules a special meeting.
There's another planning, there's one more planning meeting, but, right, or was that tomorrow?
They'd have to schedule a special meeting, and then, um, to set a town meeting too, that's, means you all, we'll all have to get together again, so I don't, it just, I should have to fax them tomorrow and let them know if it looks like it can happen.
Would you do that? Because if it's, you know, if it's inherent that we do it by the end of the year in order for them to make the donation, we ought to be able to discuss that a little bit.
They, they really want to do it by year end.
Yeah, it's going to be protection.
So that's, yeah, protection.
The planning was last Thursday, correct?
They, they would have to have a special meeting.
Has that been discussed with planning?
It hasn't been, but I don't, I don't think they really have a problem.
Then we would have to have it, we'd have to set a meeting, and I don't know that we have enough time to set a town meeting.
Maybe suggesting where we set a meeting pursuant to the acceptance of the referral? Can we do that?
But we don't have enough time to set our town meeting.
How many towns have town meetings or town meetings?
Three days to call a special council meeting, and then five, five days to call a town meeting.
Right.
Oh, wow.
So, you're talking eight days of work and eight days a week, and it's.
That's after planning, that needs to, before.
But we could set it pursuant to their approving the 824, but I'm talking about the time. Today's the 11th, um, and then.
I mean, for tax purposes, this is obviously beneficial for them, and it would be.
12, 13, 14.
If we can accommodate these people for their.
Yeah, I'm just saying, uh, what's the municipal schedule for the final week? We probably could.
Yeah, we also.
They're not taking, they're not leaving early.
Yeah, it's just a town.
Planning has four people.
Stephanie, do you have a? I'm not worried about planning, I'm more worried about us.
Yeah, but if two people can't make it, they can't even go on. So they can't find a time.
What's the calendar?
Try.
Today is the 11th, so tomorrow's the 12th.
When we set a town meeting, that is not a, see, it was a town council meeting.
No.
This is just.
Right.
Calling a meeting, somebody needs to arbitrate that.
And people are allowed to attend it, so we have to warn it, and.
You've got Christmas in two weeks.
Yeah, it has to be, but it's 12, 13. So, uh, next planning meeting, you think they could get together by the end of this week?
I could try.
I mean, for safety's sake, stay.
Right.
They close.
Is this something we could call?
Yeah, that's what I'm just, in my head, I'm just going through, so you got the 15th, then it'd be the 22nd, um, Thursday, the 21st. I mean, 22nd is, uh, one of those days where everybody's, um, holiday already. Anybody want to chime in here, what you're thinking about?
That would be fine, with the week between.
Whatever interests you.
Thinking about the planning, which if you want.
Thursday. Yeah, but we get, we're giving them the most time possible to meet and allow for some change in our part if it had to go to the final, that's how I'm thinking. So if we set the 21st and something, uh, bollocked it, then we'd still have the other week, but I'd like to, what do you, uh, December 21st?
Sure, sure, that's what I mean.
Well, mostly, very seldom matters, you know what I mean?
Walter? I hear no comments over here. All right, let's say 12:21 at 6:00 PM.
I presume you can get them warned by the 15th, right?
Yes. We're going to find out about that tomorrow. Okay. So, Stephanie, what all this leads to is that we will. Based upon the outcome of the planning meeting to approve an 824 referral, we'll meet on December 21st at 6:00 PM for a town.
Can those be right here?
Right in the Paul Martin Room. Okay?
Yeah.
So, right. Would you be so kind as to check with them and let, let me know?
The location is to be right here.
Yes, I said that, Paul Martin Room, yep. Thank you very much, Kathy.
Thank you, Kathy.
All the heat.
Did you go to the confirmation?
Yes, we did.
I did something really bad last week, though. Here I am. Uh, item number 11, Town Council Rules and Procedures. Uh, this is for discussion, uh, for rule number 15 of our Town Council Procedures. Tom, you want to just read that out loud so we're all aware of what we're talking about?
For discussion regarding rule number 15, a council member may attend and participate in a town council meeting through electronic communications. He or she shall be present only if the member can hear everything said at the meeting, and all those attending can hear everything said by the electronically participating member. If the mayor determines that condition is not occurring, the mayor shall terminate the council member's attendance through electronic communications. The mayor shall determine if the qualifications have been met to construe a quorum pursuant to Section 404 of the Town Charter. Electronic participation at council meetings is subject to the discretion of the mayor and a majority of the physically present council members based upon the following conditions. A, submit such request to the mayor at least three business days prior to the meeting. B, ensure the remote location is quiet and free from background noise and interruptions. C, council members participating electronically may cast votes. However, if a council member electronically joins the meeting after an item of business has been opened, the remotely located member shall not participate nor cast any vote until the next item of business is opened. When a member attends a meeting electronically, all votes shall be roll called vote upon the request of a physically present member. A member who is attending electronically must identify him or herself by name and be recognized by the mayor before speaking. All discussion shall be audible and discernible. Legal reference, Connecticut General Statute, Section 1-235.
Discussion?
Sir, second. Second one?
Not a motion.
No, no, this is discussion only. Um, discussion from anyone?
It'd be two time.
Mike, would that be you putting your hand up? Thank you.
Is it tied, the two time limit, is that on this?
I do not see it on this one.
I think when we were chatting about this last meeting, that was mentioned, I guess it's not in here.
I think that's.
That a person would not be able to do this more than twice in any given year? Is that what you remember?
Calendar year.
Yeah.
I actually have that to, um, insert if you may, we did, for consideration. It was Bob Hannah suggested, um, that participation by electronic means by any town council member be limited to two times per calendar year, except that the town council by majority vote shall allow a town council member to participate more than two times when conditions or circumstances justify such added participation. And I believe, um, the public speaker who added this said that had come from the state statutes. I did not research that.
Yeah, I do remember. I guess it does.
That's his verbatim.
Any other discussion? Walter?
This rule doesn't speak to me. The problem is, or my problem or my concern is, it says if the mayor determines that condition is not occurring, the mayor shall terminate, blah, blah, blah. It sounds like a, if it is a, if you situation is for some concern, it sounds like a slippery slope. It sounds like we're going down the rabbit hole with this. I would rather have people sit in front of me so we can interact face to face. You can tell a lot by people's body language, how they react by putting them off in the distance in Florida to call in. Hi, I'm on a cast of a vote. I just have a problem with that. How many people use this anyhow? How many communities use this? It says, is this something that's usual or is it unusual? If it does happen, it probably should be very, very rare.
Right. I can think of one time maybe when we mentioned that it would be convenient, but as a rule in my time, your time, your time. Do you remember?
If you're going to hold a discussion, I want to see physical presence. I don't want a decision being made. You know, it says here, electronic participation at council meetings. That means while the meeting is going on, you can vote on that. Otherwise, to me, it seems like it's a unilateral decision on the part of the mayor to grant electronic participation.
No, I think, Walter, I think maybe when you're reading that, it says if he determines the condition, it's referring to being able to hear the person.
Right. Is subject to the discretion of the mayor and a majority of the physically present council members based on the following conditions.
Yeah, to have it happen.
Does that mean at the time the meeting is going on?
Yeah.
See, I got a problem with that. I would, to me, that's.
Well, I guess, wait, it couldn't.
A unilateral decision.
Well, it's counter, it's, this is backwards then, because right here, it says you have to submit this three days in advance.
Yeah.
So I'm discussing this with you, that how can you have a majority of the people sitting at the table at the time you're going to do it if you already knew three days in advance? I don't know. Well, that's why we're talking about it.
Right, that's why we're doing these questions.
Well, again, I have a problem with it. If you've got something to discuss to the public, you want, you should be present. The public should be able to see your facial reactions. They should be able to see your volume language. It tells a lot about your feelings or what's going on. I don't, I'm hiding in the closet and I could push a button. You don't know how many people are in that closet when you say.
Right, you're right.
Hey, I want you to be quiet, but hold up a sign when it comes time for me to vote. I got a problem with that. To me, it's going down a rabbit hole. You go down the rabbit hole, there are too many things down there that can get you in trouble. So I, I'm not, it doesn't speak to me. I guess that's what it's saying.
Thanks, Walter.
I can go either way. I just want to play devil's advocate for a moment. And I know leading up to this year's election, participation was a big subject, whether or not people participated. And I'm envisioning, again, with a two-time limit, would it be better for somebody who, let's say Frank Wargo travels the world for Rotary, got stuck on a connection, we've all missed connections, but was able to participate? Would that have been better for the town in that one instance? I know that wouldn't meet the three-day requirement, but just, you know, kind of think through the scenario. Would that have been better for the town than him not being able to participate? So there's something to think about. The other thing to think about, I don't know what the technology is, so I need a little latitude, but Skype, I mean, the world goes with Skype. Skype would give you a face and a facial expression and the ability to see that person. So you could set up the technology to do that. The world does run on conference calls and web access. Whether or not we want to do that is, you know, I totally open that, but I just want to throw that out there, that is a possibility when things happen that you can't predict.
Well, that's what I'm saying. If it's rare, I could probably live with it. Frank Wargo is one person. You only get eight or 10% of the community out to vote in a local election anyhow. And shame on us for doing that. Does that mean the rest of the people are waiting to push a button because they want to vote electronically? You've got, what, 12, 14 hours to cast a vote. You could cast your vote early, absentee back. I don't buy it. It just doesn't speak to me.
And I'm raising my own hand for myself to say that there's no provision here for what you just brought up. And to me, that's more likely to happen, that someone would be on their way home to attend a meeting and be caught because of a storm like the other day and maybe wouldn't be able to get here from the airport, so they're going to call in from their car. I thought there was some sort of a caveat here that in exigent circumstance that somebody could. So this really limits it a lot, I guess. I don't know.
I think you're right. I think there was something in the prior version that talked about emergency circumstances as opposed to planning ahead and doing it routinely.
Because planning ahead is more like a vacation and we all take time off for vacation and some people do it around the meetings, but I don't know.
I was just jotting down a few questions. Let's say this was approved. Is there a number of, how many council members can do this at a meeting?
This was brought up last meeting, right.
In all items?
Are we all going to be sitting at home or wherever we are?
I thought we had a forum.
So you need a forum here, so on the phone, what counts as a forum?
Well, it says that somewhere in here, I'll be back, you have to have a majority based upon the people physically here.
You know, and this is one thing I had thought about just a few days ago. When we sit here at this table, besides the fact that Walter said, you can see our body language, you also see we're not being advised by anybody. When you're sitting someplace else on the phone, you could have an advisor sitting next to you, listening in and guiding you one way they want you to argue, oh, whatever. Kind of made me uncomfortable when I started thinking about that. And you know what? If we allow town council members to call in, if I was a member of the public, I'd argue, why can't I call in? You know, if you're treating the town council one way, why wouldn't you treat the public the same way?
And other boards and commissions.
Well, that goes on. I mean, does this go to board adjutant, does this go to finance, does this go to planning, the other elected things, you know? I mean, I'm just throwing questions out there. You know, our federal government doesn't do this. Our state government doesn't do this.
They're no example to use behind.
You know what? It's fun to bust their chops. People can bust our chops, but you know that they, a lot of them are good people.
I didn't say anything personally about them, I just think the process is going to be a little bit.
There are a few that I would not like to be seen there, but there's a lot of good people at the federal and state.
Absolutely.
And it was interesting because at the state level, if you're in the room to vote, you have to vote, yea or nay. You can't abstain. So if you don't want to vote, you got to run out of the room fast, you know? So it's, they make a big point about being in that room. Does this include the mayor? Can the mayor call? You know? Can the town attorney call? You know? I, you know, a week ago, I was like, yeah, let's see how this can work out. And the more I think about this, the less I think this is a good idea. I just keep having more and more questions and fewer and fewer answers where I think this is needed. If we really needed this, I'd say, all right, yeah, let's continue talking. But I don't see the need for it. It's like we're solving a problem that doesn't exist. So I'm just, it's not great.
Michael, you were next?
Yeah, I agree with the, for example, the executive session. How do we know that there's not other people in the room?
Well, we wouldn't be able to do an executive session.
I mean, it's just, it's not transparent.
You could never do an executive session. Wouldn't be allowed.
But even so, I just, it just feels funny to me.
Okay. Doug?
I have a question. Hopefully I'm reading this right. It says, person is supposed to submit request to the mayor for at least three business days prior to meeting. So if somebody's stuck in a storm, it's known void, so it wouldn't be the process of what's on here. So I agree with Walter and a lot of the council members. That's why we have nine people, so we can have a forum whether somebody gets sick or injured. So I'm really not, so if this case says that we have to submit something three days before meeting to be there, then who would be known void if somebody got hurt, injured, stuck with a storm? That wouldn't apply to this.
Correct.
If I'm reading it right.
You're reading it right.
Any other? Mike?
If there's such an issue that we want to have everyone here, I mean, we tabled it before because we wanted, I kind of agree, we do have nine people for a reason and it just does seem like there's so many variables and we keep trying to address these variables that just keep getting thrown.
I think it's something we got to continue to discuss. I can accept and understand most of the trepidation here in the room, because I have some trepidation with this as well. I think it's something that needs to be fleshed out more for another discussion. I think part of the spirit is, is moving us into the electronic world, which I'd like to see this meeting streamed. So to answer your question, the public wouldn't have to call in, they would just go to their iPhone or their pad and stream and watch this. I think all of these meetings should be streamed for the public to see live.
That's outgoing.
But outgoing. But I also don't think, it's also in the spirit of this could be an emergency tactic for people that get stuck, get hurt, you know, somebody winds up in a car accident yesterday and is sitting in their hospital bed and was really looking forward to this discussion, they should be able to participate.
But it's still a three-day gig.
And that's, Mike, I have a problem with the three days, because that's, to me, is you're planning a vacation around this. So I think this should be in more of an emergency type of situation, but I think we should continue this discussion. I mean, we could sit here all night long about it, but I think we should all pose a series of questions.
Yeah, we're not going to decide on.
Right, let's pose a series of questions in this and keep this discussion alive. I see where you're coming from, Walter. I think everybody sees where each other's looking at, you know, there's a lot of money to your questions here.
Oh, Walter, sorry.
Well, I'd like to, I'm just a couple to myself, because during the 1930s, FDR tried to pack the Supreme Court, and the famous quote that came out was that the Congress said, "A stench in time saves nine." They didn't allow them to pack the Supreme Court. Here we got nine members. Let's stay with the nine members physically in this council.
All right. We've now come to every possible title and now we're in the Supreme Court. We've had quite a meeting this year. Is there any further discussion? Do I have anybody?
Motion to adjourn.
Wait, let's finish this. Do you want to table this to continue at another meeting or we want to, we don't have action on here, so.
I think if some members of the town council or all the public have specific things that